Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting for today, January 20th. I'd like it to be July 2020. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for a moment of silence. This moment of silence is for our first responders here in Londonderry. Please pray for their safety. Thank you. Okay, folks, the first item on our agenda is public comment. So if I have anyone from the audience who would like to address the council, now would be a good time. Anyone? Okay, seeing none.
Yes.
It's just general public comment. A public hearing will be that I'll open with regards to the budget.
Ray Burson, three Gary Drive. I just got back from South Carolina, and so I come back for many reasons, but one of them was to kind of look at the budget. I just now picked up the budget here, and I know you've had a lot of budget sessions. So we've had an increase recently.
So Ray, are these budget questions? Are these all going to be budget questions?
Pretty much, yeah.
So I'm going to have a public hearing on budget questions. Right now I'm doing just general public comment.
Well, that's what I asked, whether this was going to be about budget.
Yeah, I said it's just general public comment. Everything other than the budget. So just general public comment.
Everything's related to the budget, yeah.
So I'm going to open a public hearing on the budget. We're going to go through the pieces, and then I'm going to open it back up for people to comment about the budget.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So anyone else? Public comment, anything not regarding the budget? Okay, so I have a couple of items just to run through. I have been asked by a citizen to read something into the record for Mr. Falvey. He said, "I would like to once again thank the town council for looking into this matter." He's talking about the development of the, what are we naming the development over on Gilchrist Road or name for it?
It's part of Woodmont.
So part of the Woodmont development with regards to the removal of the apple trees. "I would like to once again thank the town council for looking into this matter. There is no doubt that this is a legal switch of a hard-won PUD element. A butters notification should be on the record. I would respectfully like to request a copy of that notification. The ethics of this switch should be objected to. I would hope that the town council would go on record as being opposed to the destruction of the third row of trees as an ethical issue and would vote that request me an open session. I would like to request that you vote." And that's from Mr. Jack Falvey, 22 Cortlandt Street, Londonderry, New Hampshire. What this is referring to is that we had asked our legal counsel to look at this particular set of plans that went through the planning board with regards to the building of single-family homes as part of the Woodmont PUD master plan. Dated today, January 20th, we received that memorandum with a summary of opinion. It's almost four pages long. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but I will have the entire memorandum submitted into the record. But let me read the summary of the opinion. So this is to the Londonderry Town Council. "You request that I review the relevant documents and meeting minutes regarding the recent removal of apple trees on Gilchrist Road and opine on whether the decision to allow such removal and replacing the removal of apple trees with crabapple trees was reached improperly. In short, no laws, rules, regulations, or ordinance were violated during the process that resulted in the decision to remove certain apple trees and replace them with crabapple trees. The developer filed a proper subdivision application. The town staff made discretionary recommendation to the planning board, and the planning board did not exceed its authority in approving the subdivision in accordance with the Woodmont PUD master plan. Moreover, the issues currently under consideration are untimely. The issues either are not raised before the planning board while the subdivision plan was pending for approval or raised and decided by the planning board as part of the approval. The planning board's approval could have been challenged within 30 days of its decision. Since no challenge was timely raised, the issues were waived." Now, he has a number of pieces here around the basis for this opinion, and goes into quite a bit of detail around 50-foot buffers, rows of apple trees to be preserved, and what was agreed to between the covenants of the homeowners association with the developer, with the owner of the property. It looks like from this memorandum and the backup for it that this went through a number of various meetings at the planning board level before it was approved. I can't remember, were you the liaison during this?
Yes.
So this took quite some time?
It took a decent amount of time, but we had talked about it for quite a bit. Certainly at the last meeting that it was decided upon.
So what I see from here, from what the attorney is opining is that there really isn't a case for anything more than what was done and what was approved by the planning board, and he feels that, you know, there was no legal malice in this. Can I see anything different?
It sounds like if there was an objection to this action, that as a community, we had 30 days to raise that objection to the planning board, and since it was never raised, that it's timed out, basically.
That is correct. Now, how long ago was this approved, do we know?
Would have been back in September, I believe.
No, this was approved in 2018.
Oh, no, I guess the most recent discussion about the trees. That came before the planning board most recently?
So what a lot of folks don't know is that the town council has very singular authority when it comes to the planning board. We only have the authority to appoint. We don't really have the authority to tell the planning board what to do. But what I would suggest that the councilors consider is that we send the message to the staff to watch this property carefully, make sure everything is done according to the way that it was approved, and that we keep a close eye on the piece of property to make sure that, you know, it lives up to our standards. I think that's probably the best remedy we have at this point. And while I know some may disagree, and I apologize for that, I'm also understanding through this piece here is that crabapple trees, I guess, are actually in the, what was explained to me is in the origin of apple trees, and they're all sort of in the same family, and crabapple trees are actually stronger than apple trees for winter. I don't really understand all of it, but that's what was communicated. So that's pretty much what I know. So, folks, we're in public comment, so if you have anything you want to talk about around this particular piece, around Gilchrist Road and apple trees and the removal of them. Yes, sir.
One question. Who's watching the Woodmont Orchard Project to make sure they're adhering to the rules that we agreed to with them? Do we have an oversight group, like inspectors, somebody that's going through and checking every time they say, "We're going to leave one row, two rows, three rows, do they actually do it? We're going to plant grass 300 feet from here, do they actually do it?" I mean, is somebody checking all those rules and inspecting that after, supposedly they do that?
Yeah, I mean, everything that's done with Woodmont has to be according to the approved PUD, but also has to be done in accordance with the approved site plan that every phase has. So each block that Woodmont develops goes through the normal site plan approval process, and everything that they have on there is, you know, inspected by the town planning staff as it goes through the approval process to make sure it's in accordance with the PUD plan, and then town engineering staff once it's under construction.
I guess my question was more like, they get the approval from the town, or planning board or whatever, and they got two rows of trees, three rows of trees, whatever it is, and all of a sudden it goes through, and it's three months, four months it takes to get this whole thing done. They get it all done, but they find out there's, let's use the example, there's two rows of trees instead of three rows of trees. Well, we get done with it, we're like, hey, that's not according to the thing. And they said, well, you had 30 days to do it, nobody appealed it, so now it's too late for you. So which means if we get a 30-day thing to keep this, someone needs to be checking them every 30 days to see if, you know what I'm saying?
Tim, the only thing I would, yeah, the only thing I would say is that in this instance, the planning board felt that everything was done in accordance with the approved PUD. If you read the language in the PUD on this third row of trees, it talks about the third row. It talks about a 50-foot buffer. And there wasn't any real clear language in the approved PUD as to which would take precedent, the 50-foot buffer or the third row. And so when it was proposed to take down the third row and replant it in between the first and third rows so that there's still three rows, the planning board felt that that plan was in accordance with what was in the PUD. So it's not as if someone said, oh, after the fact, wait a minute, this isn't in accordance. They along the way looked at the language and felt that what was being proposed was actually in accordance with the PUD master plan.
So they're checking it then?
They are.
Right. Yes, sir.
Ray Burson, three Gary Drive. I think we're kind of missing the point here, and that is that this agreement, whether it was written or was just an understanding, had more to do with the people of Londonderry and the thought that, wait a minute, we're talking about apple trees here, we're talking about appleway, which includes a lot of the roadway that goes by the apples. And particularly Gilchrist is a good example. Pillsbury Road also, a lot of other areas in town. We've gone to the state, and we've requested an appleway scenic view, and yet we don't seem to be taking that into account. I mean, what is the problem with them continuing to leave three rows of trees there? Because they want to put a particular number of houses there. 28, 24, I don't know what it is. They don't have to put that number of houses there. They don't have to have that much of a setback. By the way, that's on the duck pond. What kind of a buffer is there between the duck pond and the development? You know, there's a lot of things that come into play here. And the fact that Woodmont has a PUD plan that pretty much gives them a little leeway, or maybe a lot of leeway. Here's another instance, seems we're taking public comment. All the soil that was removed from there, the topsoil, was moved over onto Woodmont's site. Has any of that soil been tested? Wouldn't that be of concern to anyone?
So first, what the letter says is that there was a 50-foot buffer. So there was a 50-foot buffer, and what the PUD says is that each piece goes back as part of site plan and subdivision, goes back to the planning board. So the only leeway they have, if you're using the word leeway, is around zoning. They still have to follow all the rules and all the regulations. With regards to the pond, we have wetlands ordinances and all those pieces in. They still have to abide by all the regulations. With regards to the mitigation of soil, the soil was removed due to contamination. They have a state requirement and an EPA requirement to mitigate that soil. They're probably going through that process, would be my guess. They probably, I don't know this, but they probably didn't remove it from their property because there's a process of having to either dispose of it or being able to work with it. I don't know if those are true or not, and there's probably people in the public works who could enlighten me on that, but I'm guessing those are probably the things that are happening.
Is this the first time we're hearing about that the soil was contaminated?
They've always, they've been using pesticides on, you know, on the apple orchards for years.
So wouldn't that be part of the normal procedure? If you're removing soil, you test their soil, even before you remove it?
I don't know what the process was that they went through. I'm sure they probably went through a process that met the regulations.
Well, you're assuming, sure.
Well, I'm trying to answer your question.
Go ahead.
I'm not trying to have an argument with you.
No.
Okay? You ask the question, we'll look into it and see what we can figure out. Now, I mean, now, do we know, we must know what was done with the soil, right?
We do. The soil stays on site, which is perfectly legal. As long as it remains on Woodmont's own property, that's okay within the eyes of New Hampshire DES. And whether or not the soil had to be tested, which it's not always the case, I know a little bit enough about this to be dangerous. But that's up to DES to determine whether or not the soils are going to be tested. And I will tell you that if the soils have to be tested or had to be tested, Woodmont would have done that. They would have, all those things have to be done before we would allow them to move those soils because it would be part of their conditions of approval, Ray.
And we need to have that information. I suggest we need to have that information before something like that is even excavated. I mean, we're talking about a brownfield site on Gilchrist Road South, okay? Has that been determined?
Ray, again, it would have been part of their conditions of approval by New Hampshire DES on what they had to do before they would have been allowed to remove those soils.
They have to get a permit from DES to remove them.
It's not the Wild West out there.
Well, let's hope not. But, I mean, we're talking about public safety here. And, you know, what we started off with was about the trees. That was an understanding between the developer, the people on your board and the planning board, that this was about the type of Londonderry that we want, okay?
Right, and what they did was is they worked within the 50-foot buffer, and they're putting in a third row of trees. This may not be ideal, but what we've been told is that this is the better plan, and they worked that through the planning board. Again, the town council has no authority over the planning board, only to a point.
Okay, I've heard about the planning board.
That's where this happens at.
I've also heard from somebody, not mentioning names, from the planning board that they weren't sure that that was even approved. Now, was Ted part of that?
There was a discussion, and as far as I remember, we, from the planning department's wording, I believe, we didn't actually need to take a real vote on the matter.
I think we've got to be careful what we say here.
Have a consensus.
I'm not sure whether we did or we didn't. We'll refer to the site plans, and then we'll go by them. Those were signed off, and that's what was approved. So that's what we'll go by. I'm not going to determine that here, and I'm not going to debate it, but that's how we're going forward.
Okay, but look, with all due respect, we're talking about deciding on things, making decisions. We think something happened, we're not sure. We need to be sure.
Again, I'm going to be very clear. The town council does not vote on subdivisions and site plans. We don't.
I understand.
All right? The planning board does. According to the opinion we have, they followed the rules, the regulations, and all the laws. So that's what they did. If we need to go deeper than that, we can do that at another time. This isn't the place.
Okay.
Chairman, may I also add something? The, when the planning board makes a decision, it seems to me that probably folks that are very concerned about Woodmont need to attend the planning meetings about Woodmont. Because the appeal authority of the planning board is not the town council. And I don't think people understand that. If people don't like what the planning board is doing, we're not the appeals board. And I'm not shrugging our responsibility, but there is a specific way to appeal what the planning board does, and it's not to complain to the town council. It's not legal, that's not the legal path.
Okay, it was a public comment, I'm making a comment. I'm not telling you, it's your job necessarily. But I would like a clarification whether, in fact, the planning board, in fact, voted to approve it. Are they supposed to vote? Are they supposed to take a vote?
And we will look into it, and we'll check with the planning department, and we'll come back and we'll find out the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Anything further in public comment? Public comment is now closed. Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair, both affirmative. We are open for public hearing. Mr. Campo.
So before you, you have quite a few documents. You have the warrant, the updated tax recalculation, as well as the updated operating budget, revenue budget for the general fund, as well as the sewer fund. There is two citizens petitions that have been added to the list. One is a resolution to take on climate pollution. The other is to approve Kino Games. The only changes that we need to be made aware of is to the operating budget. Through looking through, with the transfer of the sewer to the enterprise fund, I looked at the way that we used to account for the administrative fees and determined that there was a better way to do it. This leads to, rather than decreasing salary lines and not recording the revenue, we record the revenue and keep the salary lines at what they actually should be. This increased our revenues for the operating budget by $233,600. And in addition to that, there was one minor expense that increased because when I removed contracts, I accidentally removed their contract as well when it shouldn't have been. And that was for $2,700. Also on the tax recalculation, you will see the CBA's first-year cost impact. As requested at the last meeting, under add-ons, I did Council Order 201911, the Taxpayer Relief Act, for the $200,000.
Okay. Start moving through these.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest doing is if you want to read the warrant articles as we go through them, I'll give a very quick summary, if necessary, and we can take public comment on each one, and then the council will vote to move it to the warrant, and then they'll take another vote on their recommendation.
All right, I'm going to, one is unnecessary at this point. I'm going to skip two and three. I'm going to try to move through the other remaining articles, and then come back and finish with two and three. Okay? All right, Article 4, Establishing Outside Detail Revolving Fund. Receive the town will vote to establish revolving fund pursuant to RSA 31:95H for the purpose of the police department special details and to raise appropriate balance of funds for the current police outside detail special revenue fund in the amount of $103,476 for deposit into the revolving fund after the funds are placed in the town's general fund if Article 5 passes. Do I need to go into the rest of it?
No, you don't. So what we're looking to do here is create this revolving fund. This would be something that would not, similar to what we did with the sewer fund last year. If all of these pass, meaning Articles 4, 5, and 6, they're all related to one another, we would not have to put this detailed fund on the ballot every year. So it reduces the amount of warrant articles we have going forward, and also allows the police to use monies out of this fund when necessary.
So will this fund, this fund's going to become part of the general operating budget, okay?
It'll operate as it's...
General fund balance, excuse me.
So when you dissolve the fund, the fund balance in the special revenue has to go to the general fund, which then goes to the revolving fund.
Right, okay.
It'll act on its own, separate from the operating budget, where essentially they will not be able to pay more than they take in.
Understood. Any questions on Articles 4, 5, and 6? Yes, Tom?
Yeah, just a general question. And I think the one that we'll get from the people coming out from behind the curtain is, why does it take three articles to do this?
You're not allowed to combine dissolving and creating a fund in one article. So you need the one to create the revolving fund. You need that contingent on the dissolving, the special revenue fund, because that requires a two-thirds vote is dissolving special revenue fund. And the third one is in case both of those fails, or one of those fails causing the other one to be null and void, we still have the police special outside detail revenue fund.
So which one requires the two-thirds?
Dissolving the special revenue fund, Article 5, I believe.
So what are the potential consequences if it doesn't all line up?
So the only thing that would potentially be bad is if all three fail. Then we'll have to go to DRA to see what we're able to do. But the police detail fund is self-funding, and it hasn't failed in the past. The way we have the wording, if you read it, it's contingent on the others passing or failing. So we can't dissolve the special revenue fund unless the revolving fund passes.
So are we doing all this so we can shorten the ballot in the future?
That, as well as, the main point of the police detail fund is to upgrade and maintain our fleet. And the way we currently have it, we're not able to use those funds to do that. Based on state statutes, this allows us to use those funds to maintain our fleet.
So we're going to be looking to try to get Article 4 or 5 to fail?
No.
No.
No. We want Article 4 and 5 to pass, and then Article 6 wouldn't matter. Ideally, we have all three pass. That way, the one that doesn't matter would become null and void.
Okay. Maybe next year we could do something more confusing for the voters.
This is going to be very confusing. I mean, if we're having trouble with it, or let me say, if I'm having trouble with it...
So Article 4, let me see if I can try and simplify it. Article 4 is to establish the revolving fund. That article, so then Article 5... So then Article five is to dissolve the special revenue. If Article five fails, then Article four is null and void. And Article six is just like we did in the past.
Article six has always been on.
We need- Yes.
Okay.
We need Article six in case Article four and five fail.
Alright, so what I would like to see at the conclusion of all of this, walking through of this ballot, I would like to see, you get with Mr. Karen, who's taping this and everything, get with him, put something together that we can put up on the website, on YouTube, alright, that explains to people, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it. So that we can do that in a simple form, so that people can go and have something to access to look at. Alright, something that's like under 15 minutes and explains to them why we're doing this and why it's a benefit.
Sounds good.
Okay? And then they can all, you know, tweet it and Instagram it and Facebook it and Snapchat it and everything else. But let's get something out there so that people are gonna have some sort of an understanding. Okay, any questions from the council? Any questions from the budget committee? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing with regards to Articles four, five and six. Are there any questions? I'll take, I'm motioning to the ballot and then, then voting?
Yep.
Well, I'll take a motion to move four, five and six to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I need a verbal vote on, on four, five and six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four oh for tonight. And I'll have to have Mr. Green vote virtually when he, since he's out of town. Okay, that's four, five and six. Seven, accept and expend state shared revenue. To see if the town will vote and accept and appropriate the sum of $265,553 to be received from the state of New Hampshire. Why are they being so generous?
Mr. Chair, this was, this is the money that we got in additional state highway monies that we're gonna be putting toward the reconstruction of the intersection of Route 28 and Stonehenge. Because of the way we have to budget, we had to put this on as a separate warrant article to accept the money so that we didn't go over default budget.
Okay. Is this the whole description we're going with? Somebody's giving us money and we want to say yes or no, or are we gonna tell the voters more?
Wow.
I'm asking, not telling. The DRA says this is good?
Can't we, can, would it be okay to say that we're gonna use it for that intersection in the article? Or is that, is that-
Or can we just say we're using it for roadways?
We could, I mean, we could, I would rather keep it more general and just say, receive from the state of New Hampshire to be used for highway monies or something to that effect.
Okay.
That'd be a bit more of a description.
An additional highway grant, something.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll accept the motion to move to the warrant.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay.
All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, I will accept the recommendation of yea for this article.
Aye.
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 Alright, that's four zero.
So for the amendment, we'll just add to be received from the state of New Hampshire in additional highway grant monies.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, roadway maintenance, maintenance expendable trust fund to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $650,000 to be placed on the roadway maintenance expendable fund. Sorry folks, did anybody have any questions in the budget committee? Anybody questions about the state giving us money? Yes, Mr. Breslin?
Try to make it short.
Okay, sir.
What I want to say was this, that money, the original money that the town lending it was given, which was somewhere around $500,000, something like that, I believe was from the governor saying that this is money we're gonna be giving back to the residents, the taxpayers. I could be wrong on that, okay? Now, that money that we're now getting was given by the legislature, the governor, to the DOT. And we have decided to use it for that intersection at the end of Stonehenge Road and Rockingham Road, which is a bad intersection that does need to be addressed. But I, I'm not certain when we, we get an amount of money, I think we need to explain what that money is being used for. And, and what the original intent was of the state giving the money to the town.
Again, the monies that are in this warrant article have to be used for highway purposes in town. So it can't be used for anything other than that. Here's why I want to be general about it though.
Yeah.
Because if something happens, if something goes awry with the intersection improvement and we write it specifically used for that, we're gonna need another warrant article down the road to then change the use of it. This way, it's, you know, it says it's for highway use.
Yeah, well, ultimately, it sounds like it's probably a good use.
Okay.
I just wish perhaps the developer would contribute more. Did they put in a second paved lane to go towards Derry? The problem is taking traffic going north towards Manchester. That's where the real problem is. Did the developer contribute to this?
The developer put in the, the right-hand turning lane. That was their contribution when they built that development.
Personally, I think they should have put in more.
Well, when those things come in front of the planning board, go see them.
Thank you.
Alright, Article eight, roadway maintenance expendable trust. For $650,000 for roadway maintenance trust fund. Any questions? Budget committee, any questions? Public, any questions? I'll accept the motion to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Is this another one that I'm combining?
No.
So I'll take a, a council vote for yea on Article eight?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
That's four zero. Expendable maintenance trust fund, to see if the town will raise and appropriate a sum of $180,000 to be placed in the town's expendable maintenance trust fund. So is this for the buildings and all of that?
That it is.
Yes. Do I have any questions from the council? From the budget committee?
I do have one question, John.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Going forward, is this going to be enough money for our buildings, for maintenance and-
Oh, Mr. Cotton, what are your-
Capital improvements.
That's a good question, Ted. I mean, the buildings are getting older. I'm just maintaining the $180,000 to, I think, with what I've got in my balance to add $180,000 that, I mean, we got some significant projects coming up. With the fire station, the south fire with the trim, with the library, we've got town hall. So, from the numbers I've worked out, I think the 180 will continue to be sufficient to what we've got, our current needs.
Thank you.
And that's including with all our, what other items that may come up as well, surprisingly?
Yes, we, we try to keep a minimal balance, about $100,000 so that we- One AC unit, like at the police department, it was $80,000. Same with the library. So you can very quickly spend that. But I, I believe right now we've maintaining where we are.
Okay.
Does the, does the library have in their budget any, anything for, for maintenance like this?
The library, I can't speak for the library, but the library does a lot of their own maintenance. And Barbara and I do work together on certain items that I'll pick up, like the walkway. We paid for that. So it's a joint, joint effort. Same thing with the fire department, same thing with the police department. We're all working together to get through these. Might not be 100% expendable maintenance, it's a split, just to cover these items.
Yeah, I, I guess my recommendation, not now, but going forward, as the manager, is that maybe we want to look at consolidating so we don't, we don't have small pieces of maintenance around in the various budgets, plus a large warrant article for maintenance. I think it, it doesn't give us a clear picture, or the budget committee a clear picture, what we're spending on maintenance unless you, you, you are smart about pulling it all together. And, you know, that doesn't mean that the other budgets ought to stay the same. They ought to, they ought to come down by that amount of maintenance if we're gonna move it into one, one spot. But, or we push it all out to the, you know, having, having a mix there is a, doesn't feel, doesn't-
Well, there's, there's general, there's general maintenance stuff, HVAC maintenance, building maintenance that should belong in the, in their budgets. This is larger pool of money that will take care of the larger issues. Whether you need a new roof, you need a whole HVAC-
Yeah, I, I hear you, I just, I'm not sure there's a clear line of demarcation between those things you mentioned before and the things you mentioned secondarily. I, if there is, I'm not aware of it, but I, I just, it, maybe we need a policy that, that says, here's what goes into departmental maintenance budget and here's what goes into the, the maintenance trust. Just so that we're not double counting and, or, or the other side of it is missing altogether. Gee, a library, we don't have anything in our budget and well, the town didn't put anything in there for you, so nobody has it. Or the other thing is, they, they put it in and we put it in, now we gotta double, a double count.
So Steve, let me ask you a question.
I don't think we're double counting. I mean, we're, it's very clear, I mean, if you've got general yearly maintenance contracts, those belong in your budget.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Would you say that operational maintenance is in the departments?
Yes.
Project maintenance is in the expendable maintenance trust?
Yes.
Is that the difference?
That's how I can, yes.
And sometimes, sometimes, they'll have some extra money and we share.
I wouldn't say extra money, but I will exist and help whatever the department is. If their budget's running short, yes, we'll help them out.
So we were, okay, got it.
So, I think, I think it's well defined now.
Okay. Okay, alright. Any questions from budget committee on expendable maintenance trust? Any questions from the public on expendable maintenance trust? I'll accept the motion to move to the warrant.
So moved.
All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept the recommendation of yea for number nine.
Aye.
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 It's four zero. Next item, Article 10, geographic information systems capital reserve fund to see if the town will vote and raise to appropriate $28,000 to be placed in the GIS systems capital reserve fund. Any questions?
Do have a question. Seems like every year we're putting money into this.
Yep.
Is it because the software costs so much money? Or is it that it needs more maintenance or updating, or what is that money going to do?
I mean, the software costs money, but it doesn't, it's not, what this is primarily for is the flyover every five years. You know, we do a very detailed flyover of the town. You know, people often sometimes ask, well, can't you just use Google Maps? Google Maps gets their information from folks like us who do the flyovers. So, but as I said, our, our cycle is every five years.
So we put money into this basically every year so that we can pay for it every five?
Correct, by the time that flyover comes up, yeah.
Sounds good.
Good to know. Any questions from the budget committee? Should we be charging Google Maps? Questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Doug Thomas, 143 Mammoth Road. The last comment just raised a question. When you mentioned flyover, are they, will, can the cost be decreased if they start using drones? Will that affect the cost?
I don't know, it's, you know, the drone technology is, is still relatively new. We had our last flyover in 2017, I don't believe that was done with drones. So the next one slated for 2022. Perhaps by then, they'll have the technology to, again, these are very, when you look at the GIS, it's much more detailed than just, you know, a Google Earth picture. So whether drones can do that or not, and will it decrease the amount, we can start looking into that now.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Good question.
I'll take a motion to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll accept a, a vote of yea for, for this article.
Aye.
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 That's four zero. Are you capturing these, Kirby? Article 11, Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate, appropriate $75,000 to be placed on the Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion Capital Reserve. Questions?
I'll have one question. I take it's for Steve. How much more room do we have in our cemetery with this $75,000 potentially?
Yes. So for the Pillsbury Cemetery expansion, that's the only cemetery we have in town with any growth potential. We get the additional three acres from that development. The total cost at the time to do the total development, add 625 plots, was around $850,000. So my goal is every year to put in 75 to 100. To that goal, we did complete phase one of the phase three, I know it's confusing, which gives us 100 plots. The goal is just to be able to keep ahead so that we can complete the whole thing to get 625 plots there. We currently have around $300,000, I believe.
$250,000.
$250,000, excuse me.
Are you guys running into much ledge up there?
In that particular area, no. The ledge was to the other side. This particular one is gonna require quite a bit of fill. So we won't be hitting ledge to the east, west, excuse me. Gotta remember where we're at, yeah, so that's the goal. The whole idea is to put the infrastructure in there, the drainage, the roads, and all the markings so that we have a cemetery that's well-maintained and that we know where everybody is.
Tom?
When, when we sell lots-
Yes.
For burial, do, does that revenue go into the same fund?
What happens there, you could call it a potential, potential, potential care fund that goes into the cemetery. So when you pay for a plot, whether it's a single plot, it's $500. If it's a double, it's $800. That gets put into a trust, into the investment in, in those just keep gaining interest every year that we take out, we can only take out the interest that's earned, we can't take the principal. So every year we pull out a certain amount to maintain our cemeteries. But you gotta remember, we've got eight cemeteries in town, which many of them were established back in the late 1700s, 1800s, 1900s, that didn't have those funds. So, this pool of money that is collecting and earning interest for the, so we can take out seven, usually take out $17,500 to maintain our cemeteries with my main, with my budget of $30,000 to be able to maintain spring, summer, fall, maintenance of the cemeteries. It's tight, but that's where all those funds come from.
Okay.
To maintain by the cemetery bylaws.
So it's two separate funds? The, the, the amount, the capital reserve to-
Capital reserve is a totally, yeah, it's not, not tied. Capital reserve is for the expansion or, or of the cemetery in this particular one, which is the Pillsbury Cemetery, which is the last cemetery we have in town that we can sell plots.
Thank you.
One last question. Are you sold out of plots, or are you still taking orders in the future? Or are you not taking them until they're available?
No, we, we are back on selling plots. At a time we were on hold only as needed. But now that we've got the phase three started- But now that we've got the phase three started, we can get back into opening up additional plot sales.
Yes, Tim.
Total amount, you said you needed 800, what?
At the time, this was, three years ago, it was $850,000 to do the whole, to do the whole three acres.
So we're like still 600 short.
Any further questions? Thank you. If you haven't taken the time to walk through our cemeteries, it's a really, a real history of the town. Take a little time. It's very interesting. Okay, so I will accept, is there anyone else from the public about the cemeteries? Article 11, I'll accept the motion to move it to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept the, a vote of yea for Article 11.
Aye.
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 Nay, none, four zero. Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will raise and appropriate $20,000 to be placed on the Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund to further, to authorize the use of $20,000 from the June 30th undesignated fund balance towards disappropriation. Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Would it help if we used some language in this article to help explain what this money's going to be used for as opposed to the last article, which is being used to, you know, acquire new, new land? This is used for something different.
This particular warrant article has been established so that, let's say Glenwood, Pleasant View, Valley, Sunnyside, those cemeteries. So for example, Pleasant View right now, the three entrances into Pleasant View are basically in dire need of repair. So these funds will be used for major repairs into those older cemeteries, such as ones that I mentioned, so that we can make repairs to the stone walls, the road structure. That's what this particular item is. The other one was Pillsbury, it's very specific to the Pillsbury.
My suggestion to the council, to the town manager, is that we put some additional language in here to, to capture what Steve just said so that, again, we don't have, when you have multiple articles that seem almost the same, people get confused. And when they're confused, they vote no.
Yes.
So if we want the public to support this, we might need to explain it a little bit more. And the explanation you gave was perfect. We just haven't captured that yet.
What if we said to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $20,000 to be placed in the Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund for the repairs and maintenance of all town-owned cemeteries?
Yeah, that's excellent. I'm just saying that, the message I'm trying to give is that if they sound too similar.
Yes.
Then it's almost like it's a double hit and people will get, get confused and vote no.
Understood. All right, so anything from the Budget Committee? Public? I'll accept a motion with the amendment to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, simply by saying aye.
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 I'll accept a mo, a vote of yea for this article.
Aye.
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 I'm not, by the way, folks, I'm not asking for nay because I'm not getting any nays. Four zero. Article 13, Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 to be placed in the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund and to further authorize the use of $50,000 from the June 30th undesignated fund balance towards disappropriation. Any questions from the council? Budget Committee? No? Public? Fire Department Capital Reserve Fund. Seeing none, accept the motion to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept a, a vote of yea for Article 13.
Aye.
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 It's four zero. Article 14, Capital Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote and raise to appropriate $32,500 to be placed in the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund. Funding will come from the annual distribution of the public education and governmental access programming from the current franchise agreement.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is a new warrant article, however, this fund is not new. We've been getting it all along and we've been expending from it all along. What is new is that the Department of Revenue told us that in order to expend from it going further, we needed to place it on the warrant and receive voter approval to expend from it.
In order to put those funds into the capital reserve.
Right, well, this will be more part of your YouTube video.
I'll add it to the list.
I guess.
Well, I would just do the whole ballot, honestly. All right, so.
I guess going kind of off of what Tom's been going off this whole time, maybe a bit more description upon with this. What, people at home may not fully understand the cap equipment, what we, where this, where's this money going for? You know, yes, we have a cable building, but they may not fully understand, people at home. It's one of those things easy for people. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me on that.
The problem is, he's buying equipment and he's maintaining stuff. So. I don't know. It's up to you guys. What do you want to do? Want to leave it or change it?
Can I just make, and I'm, I totally understand your suggestion. My fear is there's like 28 warrant articles, and the longer we make these warrant articles.
I just don't want people getting confused.
And I, and I get that.
With a lot of info.
So we're doing that YouTube video. I don't have any better idea other than to do that. I mean, you know, just try to get more information out there. I understand what you're saying, but I don't know how to describe it because he's, he's doing maintenance and he's buying new.
Correct.
He's not doing, he's not doing one or the other.
And if you.
And he's, and he's here. If I'm wrong, Drew, tell me I'm wrong.
If you specifically state one, this money then has to be spent on that purpose. So if you say to buy equipment, he can't then maintain his equipment.
I guess I'm not saying to buy or maintain. I'm saying people may not fully understand cable equipment. They may not fully understand that we have a cable building in town. I don't think everyone fully understands that. Where that money's going to is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
The fact that there's no property tax cost here, I think it's less of an issue in this particular one, that this money's coming from, basically from Comcast.
What if we just put in the name of the building and the, of the cable access building?
No, because then if he needs to buy equipment for here, he's not able to.
So this is also for here, too?
Correct, it's any cable equipment. And Drew, I think you're back there. If I'm wrong, come out and let me know.
It's fine, I'll, I'll drop it.
It's, it's just, it's, if you pigeonhole where it's to buy and update equipment here, then he can't do anything over there.
Okay.
I get your point. Um, listen, I'm all for reducing articles. Anything from the Budget Committee? Anything from the public? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, simply by saying aye.
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 Chair votes affirmative. I'm looking for a vote of yea for Article 14.
Aye.
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 Four zero. Article 15. To establish a Recreation Department Capital Reserve Fund. I'll tell you, we do need to find a better way with all this stuff. To see if the town will vote to establish a new Recreation Department Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of RSA 35 colon 1, for the purposes of funding, the purchase and lease and repair, maintenance of existing of new and vehicles, of new equipment and vehicles and necessary to carry out the core mission of the Recreation Department to appoint, and to appoint the town council as agents to expend the funds from the Recreation Department Capital Reserve Fund, further to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be placed in, in the Recreation Department Capital Reserve Fund and further to authorize the use of 15,000 from the June 30th undesignated fund balance towards disappropriation. Well, I think that just about says it all.
It does. Very explanatory.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the Budget Committee? Any questions from the public? Yes, ma'am, please, please come forward to the microphone. I'm sorry, ma'am, we just need to get your name and address so when she's doing the minutes, you can capture them.
Jennifer Tuma, 102 Gil Stone Drive. I just have a que, very simple question. Where's the money coming from if they, if they're not requesting any money? Where's their prior money coming from, from their budget? How are they getting it?
So it's established from our fund balance, which is basically our surplus account. But that's where the initial $15,000 is coming from.
Is that where most of some of the warrant, when they don't request property taxes? Is that where most of the money is coming from, from the prior funds?
Oftentimes it is, yes. Unless, unless it's supported by user fees. So for instance, in the past, we had a sewer fund on there that had no tax impact, and it was because it's supported by user fees. But oftentimes when you see zero tax impact, it's coming from that undesignated fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, for you, just so, we have about $6 million in that fund balance.
Oh, okay. So if you have $6 million now, would you be requesting any more money to be put into that fund in the future?
No, in, in fact, we never request money to be put into the fund. The way monies get into the fund is at the end of the fiscal year. What's ever left from our appropriations that didn't go spent, or if there's excess revenue, goes into that fund balance account.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions? I'll accept the motion to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, simply by saying aye.
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 Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept the motion of yea for this article.
Aye.
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 That's four zero for Article 15. Article 16, DPW Equipment and Vehicle Leases. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a 10-year lease agreement in the amount of $425,000 for the purposes of leasing two six-wheeler trucks and one-ton pickup truck, and to raise the appropriate sum of $53,115 for the first year's payment for that purpose. The lease agreement contains an escape clause, majority vote required. Any questions from the council?
What is the majority vote?
50 plus one.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the Budget Committee? Yes, sir.
These are 10-year leases. I'm curious to know the life expectancy of the, the six-wheelers and also the one-ton pickup.
Gentlemen?
These, these leases are consistent with our program that we established several years ago, that six-wheelers will be replaced every 10 years and one-tones will be replaced every seven years. So this was, you know, consistent with the, with our program.
That's what we expect their life expectancy.
In the past, what?
That's what we expect their life expectancy to be before it becomes more expensive to repair it, than get another one.
So in the past, we were putting money in a capital reserve fund that was establishing the fund to fulfill this program. Around now, we are switching to be consistent with the fire and police department, and we are leasing the equipment instead of buying straight purchase.
I guess I can't reconcile a 10-year lease on a truck that you're expecting to only last seven years.
No, the, one truck is for seven years and the other, did I not say?
Yeah, it's a 10 years.
So six-wheelers are 10 years and the one-ton is seven?
Yes.
Yes, so I'd like that amendment if the council will go with that.
Yeah, I don't see the seven in here anywhere.
Yeah, it should be 10 years for the two six-wheelers and seven years for the one-ton.
All right, so let's make that amendment. If we were to buy these, what does a six-wheeler cost? Ballpark.
Depend, because we're buying, you know, how we expect it with the equipment, it's 80,000 plus, you know, what was it with the last one we bought, purchased?
I'm looking at a number of about 180 to 190 thousand.
180,000 because, you know, there's a body plus that.
Right, I understand. Just so people have an idea.
Yeah, 60,000. We have 180,000 for each to put in a capital reserve and 65,000 for pickup, for one-ton.
Okay, thank you.
And Jonathan, for the benefit of folks who weren't either on the Budget Committee or are new to the process, when we started going to our leasing programs, really, it started with the police vehicles. A couple of reasons we started doing that. First thing is, is that when people hear the word lease, by the way, they shouldn't always think of it in the way that we probably think of leasing, which is you lease it for three or four years and you turn it in. In this case, it's more of a funding mechanism than anything else.
It's more financing.
It's financing. So if, if the life outlives the lease, we hold on to it. It's not like we have to turn it back in. That being said, we used to, as Yanos was explaining, we used to have capital reserve accounts for all of our vehicles, and we would put money in those capital reserve accounts year after year. By doing it this way and actually making these payments part of the operating budget, and putting the leases and the vehicles in the operating budget, it actually smooths out the funding of all of these vehicles much more so than putting them in those capital reserve accounts. So for instance, for our ambulances, we lease all of our ambulances. But when one lease is up and we replace it and go into another lease, it's still part of that operating budget going forward. We don't have to have a separate warrant article or create a new capital reserve fund and put monies in it every year to then purchase it down the road.
Thank you. Mr. Fire Chief, we're up to like $2.5 million for the big ladder truck now?
Yeah, the tower, tower's about 1.7 million. Ambulances are up to about 260,000. And the last one, the ladder is 700,000.
So. Well, which means 180,000 on.
So the answer was is that we could come up, we could come up short in the capital reserve fund. That's why that can't happen to us.
So, so we went to a philosophy that if it has wheels, we're going to lease it.
From a financing mechanism. Okay, questions from the public? All right, I'll try to see if I can start moving a little bit faster. So I'll take a motion to move Article 16 to the warrant.
So moved as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept a motion of yea.
Aye.
A vote of yea.
Aye.
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 Four zero. 17. Town hall parking lot paving, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $265,000 for the purposes of paving the town hall parking lot and to further authorize the use of $265,000 from the June 30th undesignated fund balance towards disappropriation. Questions from the council? Questions from the Budget Committee?
I know this is from the unassigned fund balance, but I'm just curious. Did you get three quotes? To do this work?
Yanos was the one who obtained the quote, was from Continental Paving. They're a preferred vendor. We've done most of our paving projects with them. They give us, well, how would you explain it, Yanos?
We did a, we did an estimate for the, what could cost, you know, to redo the parking lot. Obviously, this is just not as simply overlaying the parking lot. Parking lot is totally deteriorated, has to be rebuilt. It's 5,200 square yards of, of grinding the pavement. We have to put 10 structures, 750 feet of, of drain pipe, under 200 feet of under drain. And that's pretty much what, and plus paving, you know, four inches of pavement, some curbing, and replacing the gravel underneath in, in several locations. So the cost estimate, some people think that it's quite a bit of money, and I heard it already, but if you picture what takes you to replace, you know, 150 feet of driveway, 10 foot, and that's around $10,000. And this is like 30 driveways, so it'll be $300,000. So this is pretty good bargain, you know, that we are getting with the prices that we were using to estimate this as the prices that we have with Continental for paving and rebuilding the roads. So that's what we were using as our vendor. And hopefully we'll be able to, to do it for that price.
All right.
Anyone else from the Budget Committee? Anyone from the public on the paving the streets of gold? Somehow I knew. Yes, Mr. Breslin?
Yes. All right, Breslin. It was, is this going to include the part that is of the police department, too?
No. No.
No.
No?
No, we are. We will start from a library grinding or planning the road from a library. There's already cracking developing that on the area here. And will you see the first level and second and upper level? It's going up. Going up to just a little bit past the curb over there on the right side. The rest, the rest of the parking lot was pretty decent with the, it's still decent for the area of the police and curbs.
Okay, and the only other question is, I believe there's some discussion, not necessarily here, but partly, but about the school department building that was taken down. There's going to be a new one. Is that going to be in this same area? And would that construction, is that going to be on the end of this building here?
Right over there.
Yeah.
Right on the other side of that door.
Which we haven't even.
That that was already approved last year.
Approved to do improvements to the building. I don't think it said to tear the building down and build a new one.
Yes, it did.
It did?
Yep.
Okay, my mistake.
No worries.
I think you voted for it.
Huh? I voted for it.
Damn. You're welcome. You know, I mean, this whole, all the paving stuff drives me crazy, but you know. It's either drive me crazy or have Janos explain it to me until I just just give up. I'll accept the motion to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, speaking by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept the motion of yea.
Aye.
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 I'll accept a motion of nay. Joe?
Joe's silent.
I reluctantly vote yes. Was I gave up, Janos?
He did good.
All right. All right, as I take these, I'm going to take these two at a time, okay? Article 18 and Article 19. So when we go through and we do the votes for moving to the warrant, it's going to be for both articles, moving them at the same time. And the vote for whether we, your individual votes would be for both articles at the same time. The second article in each one of these is to authorize for a special meeting on on the cost items. Shall the town, if the article is defeated, authorize the town council to call one special meeting at its option to address the Article 18 cost items only. So that will be for each additional article, okay? Okay, Article 18, to ratify a new collective bargaining agreement between Aspie 1801 and the Town of Londonderry. So, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Town Manager, you negotiated these with our with our negotiating team, why don't you walk us through it?
Sure, so just to recap, we had five contracts that are due to expire on June 30 of this year. I'm very happy to say that we were able to reach agreements with all five unions on these various contracts. Just very quickly, I just want to give thanks to, first, our negotiating team that consisted of Attorney Ramsdale and the Assistant Manager Lisa. But also want to give thanks to the negotiating teams for the unions as well, some of whom are here with us this evening in this room. It's, negotiations are never an easy thing. It's a lot of give and take. You get a little bit of what you want, and sometimes you don't get everything you want. But in this case, I think we were, we were able to reach some very good and reasonable contracts with each union. So I'll go through these as we come to them. The first one, as you mentioned, is 1801, which includes our clerks here, the, some administration staff, as well as as our DPW highway workers. This is a five-year contract. It's 2% cost of living increase per year. And the other change that was made is they're on a step schedule as opposed to merits, so they get what are called steps. And the current table had 14 different step tables that they would move to annually. The new contract reduces that table from 14 steps to nine, to nine-step tables. And so that is the crux of the changes to that contract. And again, you'll see the estimated cost each year. And the tax impact in the first year there, 2021, is .009 cents on the tax rate.
Okay, any questions on 1801? Any questions from the Budget Committee? Yes, Jonathan?
This question applies to all all five of the contracts. If we have an estimate of the cost of a special meeting, I think it would be interesting for the public to know that cost because my fear is that they'll vote down the contracts and they'll have to pay for special meetings, might cost us more than the increases.
That's a great question.
You know, I saw you ask the same question during the school one, I should have been prepared for it, Jonathan.
And I'm going to give you the same answer they gave you. Hasn't happened yet, no, I'm just kidding. Actually, we should probably find out what that number is. And you know what, why don't you work with the clerk's office and why don't we find out what that number is?
Sure.
It could be, it could be 5,000, it could be $10,000.
Yeah, because it's not only the cost of putting the election together, it's the cost of having to petition the court to do it as well.
And the attorney's fees and everything else. So why don't we talk to the clerk's office and find out how much?
Well, do we, do we have to petition the court if we have an approval here to do it?
You do, yeah, really.
Anytime we have a special election, we've got to go to Superior Court. Okay, all right, let me see if I can, let me see if there's an, are there any significant differences between all of the five-year contracts that you haven't outlined already?
Kind of.
Each one?
Yeah.
All right, then I can't take them all at once.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's no big deal. Okay, so, public, questions on 1801? Yes, sir? Name and address.
Randy Fesch, Nine Darrow Way. I just open for a quick, further explanation, Kevin?
Yep.
On the fiscal years, by year, the, if we're doing a 2% COLA, and this, you know, it goes from 42 to 67 to 75, and then steps back down by year? Can you just give a little more information on what's driving that?
Sure, so as I mentioned, their step tables are reducing from 14 to nine. So the increases in their step get a little bit larger as the years go on. And so that's why it's, so what this cost includes is both the COLA amount increases as well as the step or merit increases that each union gets.
Okay, so then the explanation for going down, though, is people are expecting retirements? Or what would be the reason for it to go the other way? I mean, steps should keep going up, you don't go down, so.
Right, so when we do the budgeting, we look at where every individual employee falls in the step table and move them up a step, if you will, each year. And so some folks will reach the top step and then stay there while others continue to move. So I would suspect that the reason why it's going down is that some of these folks will reach the top step so that we're not experiencing that increase year over year for them in particular.
Okay, so you suspect, but you're not sure.
Well, Justin did all the costing out, that should be the case.
Exactly what it is, and the reason it starts going down is once you hit the top step, this is an increase from the prior year. So once you hit the top step, you're not getting that increase anymore, and it's going to stay stagnant, and you only get the 2% COLA.
Okay, so from year 2023, respect, I have a very experienced maxed-out step of these employees on?
That would be correct.
Mr. Chairman, I make a comment also. It, not to, so it's not misleading, when you look at years 24 and 25, the cost didn't actually go down, the increase went down.
Correct.
So it, so it's still getting higher each year, it's just not getting higher quite as fast.
And it, since we narrowed it down from 14 to nine, a five-year contract, you're looking at over half of the step table if you just start this year. And we have a lot that have been on the step table for a bit.
Thank you, sir. Anything further on Article 18? Okay, I'll accept a motion to move Article 18 and Article 19 to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, speaking by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept a yea vote on Article 18 and Article 19.
Aye.
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 And that's four zero. Article 20. This is the Londonderry Administrative Employees Association Public Safety in the Town of Londonderry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is also a five-year contract. The cost of living increases in year one is 0%. In years two through five, it is, the cost of living increase will be tied to the Consumer Price Index with a cap of 2%. On the, on the sick leave annual buyback, so what that is, is that the union, if if there's a certain amount of sick time that wasn't used throughout the year, they can buy, you know, buy that time back. They've agreed to eliminate that as part of this agreement. And you see the costs, the estimated cost for fiscal year 21 is $72,076 with an estimated tax impact of .015 cents.
Okay, any questions from the council? Questions from the Budget Committee? Questions from the public? Okay, seeing none. I'll accept the motion to move the warrant for 20 and 21 to the ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, speaking by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept a vote of yea for 20 and 21.
Yea.
Aye.
Either way, whatever works. Yea, yea, yea.
Yea.
No nays.
I threw you, didn't I?
Hey, four zero. Okay, this is the collective bargaining agreement for Aspie Londonderry Administrative Employees Association, Town Administrative Personnel in the Town of Londonderry. Am I, yes, that's okay, good.
This is, thank you. This is also a five-year contract. The cost of living increase is tied to the Consumer Price Index with a floor of 1% and a cap of 2.5%. They agreed to also eliminate their sick leave annual buyback. And they will be paying a cost share for a portion of the premium amount of their health care as follows. In years one and two, it's 0%. In years three and four, it's 3%. In year five, it's 4%.
Any questions from the council? Budget Committee? From the public? Yes, sir?
I just want to ask, all of these seem to be increases in pay or salary. And at this time, when we're dealing with increasing taxes, I wonder how this is going to fly with the general public? If you're expecting everybody to vote yes on this?
Guess we're going to find out. I can tell you that all of our contracts, since I've sat on the council, have been less than the school contracts and increases on a percentage basis. So I am, and we have good employees, and we want to keep good employees. In order to keep good employees, you got to pay good employees. And as someone who's, you know, who's talked to me over the years, who's been here for a number of years, said to me, Londonderry is the best-kept secret in this state. Let's not screw it up.
It is a good town, that's for sure. That was my question, though.
As Kevin said with the thing, I think, I don't think these are great contracts for the town, I don't think they're great contracts for the employees. I think they're fair. And I'm sure everyone would like to see us give more to the employees. I'd like to give more to the employees, too. But as you stated, we got to get it to pass.
Mr. Chairman? If I may, also, as part of the work that the negotiating team does, they do research to find out what our competitors pay their employees, which are other like towns.
Right.
And if we find, get ourselves into a situation where we are underpaying our employees compared to other towns, what happens is, we train the employees, and then they leave and go to work for those towns. And the training period for our employees, especially in our first responders, is very expensive training. And if we train them and spend the first year with them, and then they up and leave and go to a, to a competing town, if you will, then that's not, not a good expenditure of taxpayer money for all that training. So we have to be competitive so that they stay, they want to stay here.
I understand what you're saying, and that makes sense. You know, I'm just looking at it from a standpoint of the general public that is working at another job, and, you know, they're not getting a raise, they're getting an increase in their taxes, and when they see something like this, like, should I vote yes or no? You know, what are they going to do? Thank you.
Any further questions? I'll accept the motion to move 22 and 23 to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, speaking by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept a vote of yea for 22 and 23.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye. Okay, we're almost to the end. Okay, 24. This is the collective bargaining agreement with the Executive Employees Association, LEEA.
Thank you, this is also a five-year contract. The COLA in years one and two is 2%. Years three through five are tied to the Consumer Price Index with a cap of 2%. The merit potential for newly hired or promoted department heads going forward will be between 0 and 3%. Previously, it was between 0 and 5%. And then also, these employees are allowed to buy back admin time that hadn't been used at the end of the year. It was previously 60 hours of such. Going forward, for any newly promoted or hired employees into it, it will be 40 hours. And the cost impact on this is $58,644 in fiscal year 21 with a tax impact of .012 cents.
Any questions from the council? Budget Committee? Public?
So I just want to clarify, it's 1.2 cents, not 0.1.
Sorry, Justin, yeah, 1.2 cents. Or 0.12 dollars.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Randy Fesch, Darrow Way, just a quick comment, suggestion, something for you. So we have all these various contracts that we just went through. They're all five-year budgets, I think five years is a nice range. We talk about reducing warrants, we talk about impact of taxes. Is it standard practice, or does it make sense to have these all lining up to be renewed every time on a five-year basis? Or would it make more sense in the future to try and stagger these a little bit so that they're not all hitting at once for potential increases, for voting on the warrant articles, things like that? So something to comment, I don't know if other teams try and always, other towns try and always line them up, or if that's just by coincidence here, but something to think about, something to look at.
Okay.
This way we'll have 10 fewer warrant articles next year.
You know, I mean, they, 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 they had been staggered in the past, there's, there's ones that rolled over, there have been three in five years. I think the, I think the employees were looking for not to have to do this every few years as well, is that why we're all on five years, right? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, it gives us all greater predictability.
I understand, I just wanted to just, the next one I'm going to do is going to be three years, by the way. Article 24, so I need a motion, if there's not any questions from, any further questions? I need a motion to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, speaking by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, I'll accept the vote of yea for Articles 24 and 25.
Aye.
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 Four zero. Next one is a three-year contract. Ratify a new collective bargaining agreement between the Londonderry Police Employees Association and the Town of Londonderry.
Yeah, so three-year contract and the cost of living adjustment in year, in years one and two is 2%. Year three is tied to the Consumer Price Index with a floor of 1% and a cap of 2.5%. The estimated cost for 2021 is $218,491 with an estimated tax impact. The estimated cost for 2021 is $218,491 with an estimated tax impact of 4.6 cents.
Questions from the council? So this is, is this Sargent send down?
Correct.
Okay. So, questions from the budget committee? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to move the warrant, warrant 26 and 27 to the, to the warrant.
So moved.
Sir.
Was in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, I'll accept a vote of yea for articles 26 and 27.
Aye.
Aye.
That's four zero. All right, article 28, this is a petition warrant regarding improved Keno games. I've been advised that if it's non-monetary, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over 27, oh, I got 27, 28, it's non-monetary, the council nor the budget committee are obligated to vote. Or actually, the budget committee should not vote, and the council is not obligated to vote.
Yeah, I still need a motion, though, to move 28 to the warrant.
So move 28 to the warrant.
So moved.
Sir.
Was in favor, say by saying aye.
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 I'm not gonna ask for a vote. Article 29 is a resolution to take action on climate pollution. Again, this doesn't involve any, any dollars. I'll take a motion to move this to the, to the warrant.
So moved.
Sir.
Was in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
And we'll not entertain a vote. Article 30, transactions of other business, I'll accept the motion to move article 30 to the, to the warrant.
So moved.
Sir.
Was in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, and that's 30 articles.
Mr. Chairman? Representative Thomas talked to me before the meeting and wanted to know if he should address the council during public comment about the budget, or wait till we had the budget hearing. So I asked him to wait till we had the public hearing, so I, he has some general comments I think he wants to make.
Okay.
Still on the public hearing.
So, if there's anyone who would like to address the council under the, I, oh, I'm sorry, you know what? Go ahead, sit down. I still have to do one, two, and three, but, um...
Oh, right, 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 sorry.
So, um, but please, all right, so, article two, fiscal year 2021, town operating budget is, the number that we are putting forth is 37,6176 dollars? That's our final number? And the default budget, we're 50, we're about $47,000 below default?
Yep.
And we're looking at a tax impact rate of 4.328. Are there any questions on the budget? Budget committee, council, public, anybody? All right, I'm gonna do the supplemental budget at the same time. I have supplemental budget of $153,000. Now, folks, the reason we do a supplemental budget is, is there's, it's due to the bill that was passed, so we'd have full transparency to the public, and then we no longer include things like road maintenance, heat and oil, water services, internet services, and electric services, the cost of those going up. We actually put those out to the voters for approval, and, so that we can continue paying for those services, but that's done for full transparency. Is there any questions about article two or article three? Yes.
This comes up because of what the school was saying about this. This supplement budget, let's say two passes, three fails. Does that mean that you cannot, you cannot spend any money on road maintenance, heat and oil, water services, or internet services?
No.
So why does the school say that, is, I know there's a little bit different, but they say they, if they were to put this in and it failed, they couldn't pay those bills. So why can't the town...
Our attorney disagrees, and we ran ours past Department of Revenue. So we, we disagree with the school's approach.
Okay, that makes sense, then.
And we've been doing this for six years.
I told them the same thing, too. So I, I didn't understand, but that's okay if they disagree, I just want to make sure that's what it was.
We just, we disagree with their attorney's opinion.
Okay.
John?
Yes.
Where's our article for the...
Charter amendment?
Charter amendment.
I was gonna get to that. So, we technically can't put it on the ballot until the 45-day window is complete for the review by the Department of Revenue, Secretary of State's Office, and Attorney General. But we also don't need to move it to the warrant, like we're doing tonight, as long as they don't have any issues with it after 45 days of reviewing it, it automatically gets moved to the ballot. The 45-day window will be up prior to the deliberative session, I believe. What's that?
I think it's February 2nd.
February 2nd, okay, so...
It's a Sunday, then the next day.
When we do the deliberative session, it will be on, you'll see it on the ballot then.
Okay.
But that's why it's not on the ballot tonight.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, so, so we'll need to take a position on it before the deliberative session, as, you know, how we feel about it?
Yeah, or you can do it at the deliberative session, too.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll accept the motion to move article one, two, and three to the, to the ballot. Sir, please, come on up. You know, I mean, you got rules for your daughter, I'm not gonna let you, I'm gonna stop you.
I just want to follow up with a, a further question in terms of, I think it was asked in terms of, if this isn't approved on supplemental in article three, a little more detail on what, because I believe you said, John, that we could still spend money on this, and a little more detail on what this encompasses, because I looked through the proposed budget, and there's still items for electrical services within the budget in the various departments.
Right.
So in terms of what this additional money is for that's not in the budget, because most of your budget items look pretty much in line with the prior years and the budget, so why do we need these extra monies here?
Well, so, primarily, like what you see here with heat and oil, water services, those are due to the, so the default budget is the previous year's budget. Utility lines, we're not allowed to increase. Maintenance lines, we can't increase. So, the fire station that's being built is three times the size of what it previously was. But the utility costs for it are the same in the budget, under the default budget. So the only way for us to increase those lines is to do the supplemental budget, because we can't, under the default rules, do it in that, unless we want to go over the, unless we want to put a proposed budget together that's over the default budget, which we are opting not to do. So that's why we have the supplemental. I'll give you another example, roadway maintenance. So, we made a decision years ago that as debt service for roadway maintenance would fall off, we would include that onto the roadway maintenance line within the operating budget, which, under the old default rules, we could do. Under the rules the legislature set a few years ago, we can't do that anymore. So that's why you see $100,000 there for roadway maintenance. That $100,000 is, we, we paid last year in debt service for roadway maintenance, but we just can't put it into the default budget this year. So that's why it's included in the supplemental. If this were to fail, so that's back to Tim's question, so do we shut the, the lights off and the heat off at the fire department? Obviously not. So, what we'll do is, it just means that if this were to fail, we have $153,000 less to spend. So somewhere else in the budget, we'll have to find that amount in order to meet those other lines. Or we don't, and something like roadway maintenance has $100,000 less.
Or something like water services, like, the fire, the cost for fire hydrants went up $6,000, we can't put that in. Internet services, electric services, oil and heat, we all know that goes up and down. But it's, um, the legislation...
It's been going down, down more than it has recently, but I know, one thing with the, or heat and oil, I know you guys do the oil recycling, which I just learned about this year, even though I've been here a number of years, might be worth advertising that more, because I know you guys use that to burn, to produce heat, so I don't think that's well-known, that you guys do that, and provides a benefit to the town for that.
Absolutely. I think a lot of it is, is that the legislation wasn't great, so we spent probably the better part of half a year figuring out how to work with the Department of Revenue, and how to show what they meant in the bill. Now, you heard us talking about a charter amendment, the charter amendment's actually gonna reverse all this and make article three go away, so that we can go back to budgeting the way we did. But it's, um, it's, it's just not great legislation, to be honest.
Mr. Chairman, as, as a further explanation, as a member of the legislature now, I'm new to it, talking to those legislators that were in office at the time, this was done in general as a method for towns to try to save money, but this is one of those unintended consequences, and, and the legislators didn't, most of them didn't quite understand what would happen, and this is one of the things that happened. And so it's really, it's a nuance to the legislation, a bad nuance to the legislation, and it's not something that the town did. The town is trying to live to the rules that the legislature created in an unintended way.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's a bad thing, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, I think part of the reason also was to give more transparency.
Oh, completely.
You know, as we've talked a lot about these art amendments tonight, it's been around, exactly what's that money for? And I think that was part of the intent of the law as well, was to try and break some of this out, to give people more say, and try and hopefully have a little more transparency, which I think, you know, we're slightly seeing is still a problem with some of these amendments, to know exactly where the money's going for, for, you know, greater accountability, especially for some of those towns that don't manage their money as well.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the whole transparency piece, I think that was part of it. It just, it wasn't really developed really well, because when we went to, to the Department of Revenue and asked them to explain it to us, we had a hard time. And, you know, and, and this is, so our attorney collectively worked with them to come up with what we're presenting. So when the school says we can't do it, we don't do anything the Department of Revenue tells us we can't do. So it's, um, you know, but, and we agree with you. I mean, we'd rather people see, you know, what we're spending. I don't know if that answers you, so there'll be a charter amendment that's gonna change this back to the way we used to do default budgeting. Which is, I, I guess the people will tell us if that was a good or a bad idea.
So I think, just one follow-up question to Kevin, out of the, the amounts here, excluding the road maintenance, would you say, can you give a ballpark, the heat, the water, internet, how much of that's due to the, the new fire department versus just increases expected in those?
Yeah.
Because I know, like, you know...
Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the heat, the water, and the electrical are all due to the fire department.
That is correct.
Those are all fire department increases, the internet is for the townwide.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, before, I'm gonna move these to the warrant, and I'm gonna, do, Doug, do you want to talk before I do that, or after?
I can do it after it's one.
Okay. So I'm gonna accept the motion to move these to the warrant, one, two, and three?
So moved.
Sir.
Was in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
For articles two and three, I'm looking for a vote of yea.
Aye.
Aye.
And that's four zero. Okay, Doug, all yours.
Thank you, Doug Thomas, 143 Manworth Road, also a state legislator and a member of the Science, Tech, and Energy Committee. I just wanted to say a few general comments, slightly related to the budget, but also related to all warrant articles in, in town, and, and this is not for or against any of them, just, I think the taxpayers should be aware of what's going on in the state house this year, which can also affect their pocketbooks. I know that in terms of the town's, you know, budget, that affects private taxes the most, but there are areas going on that people should be aware of as they contemplate what they feel their needs are versus their wants. There are a lot of bills this year that will affect taxes. Some are establishing new taxes, some will be raising fees, some can affect your, your retail prices, and people should be aware that should all of these bills pass and they become law, the amount of money that would be involved right now is so large that leadership cannot put their hands around what that actual value is. Now, we're talking, anything, we're talking the complete gambit from your electric, your electricity bills going up, a, a sales tax on all electronic goods, iPhones, laptops, whatever. We're talking tax on skiing, we're talking, there are, there are, are bills going on involving labor, involving municipal, there are so many, I just can't list them all. So, my point is, is as you consider what you want to do, you, your take-home income may be affected also by what's going on up, up at the state. So, I'm just saying, this is a concern people should have to weigh when they decide what they want to do and everything. I, there are a lot of things that are too complicated to go into any details here, but if anyone has any questions, I can certainly answer that afterwards. Just wanted to let people know what's going on this year, that they may or may not be aware of, that might eventually affect their pocketbook.
Okay, so for folks who don't know what a Dillon Rule state is, we live in a Dillon Rule state, that means that we are not a home rule state. I, I'm hoping there's not gonna be any more unfunded mandates from the state, since the judge said that's bad. But when the state does pass legislation, it just comes down and we have to abide by it. So just so folks know, that's, you know, that's the way the rules work here in our state.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, too, Doug, John and I have been visiting the 55-plus communities in town, since they make up such a large segment of our population here. And one of the things that has come up over and over are a number of changes they would like to see that happen, have to happen at the state level. As John just explained, and as he explains to them, we are a Dillon Rule state, so a lot, we can only do what the state legislature allows us to do. And I would encourage yourself and your fellow reps and senator to give them all of, reach out to them, go and visit them, and listen to some of the changes they're looking for that they'd like to see the legislature do.
To give you an idea, we've met with over 300 of them in the last 10 days.
I'd like to add that, and I agree with that, and we have, and also, for those that may not know, I'm also the chair of the town's Senior Resources Committee, and in the past couple of years, we, we have gone out to, I think at the time it was 10 of the over 55 communities, to ask those same questions about what they need for, for them, and it was a challenge to get with all of them, because they're not all managed the same way, as you probably, you know, found out. And we would be more than happy to address that situation again in that avenue, as well as anyone can, can contact me in terms of the state as well. So, yes, we're, we're aware of that. We, we do want to make sure that there are no unintended consequences that we help our low-income and fixed-income citizens without doing anything that's going to affect their life and their ability to stay in this town.
Thank you.
John, I have one question for...
Sure.
...the rep. I just want to clarify, you had said our take-home pay could be affected, are there any bills regarding income tax, or on retirement income taxes?
Well, as you know...
Are you referring to items that are just purchased?
Disposable income is what you have at, at the, the end of the day, but, but what the cost of things...
I just wanted to make sure you're clear about take-home pay from your, from your paycheck.
Right, take-home pay, uh, did not, did not mean to refer to your, your actual income that you take back from your job wage or whatever, what, what I really meant to say was your cost of living of buying goods or just living, like, in, some bills may increase the price of gasoline. Everyone uses gas, so, most everyone uses gas, and so if the price of, of gasoline goes up artificially, notwithstanding any problems with the Middle East, that would be less money for you to spend for, for, you know, something else. Same thing with fuel, oil, propane, the same thing, if you go to buy a piece of electronic equipment, you could pay a tax on that when you otherwise wouldn't, so it's, it's gonna cost you more. So just, just your cost of living would, would, would go up. Not that, not that they would take something from, from your actual paycheck, at least not yet anyway, although there are some programs out there that, should they get passed, could perpetuate in the future some type of action that way, but, but nothing directly right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good.
All right, anything further on the budget tonight, from anybody? Yes?
I would just like...
I'm sorry, you have to come up, up here, and you gotta come up to the microphone, give me your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cheryl Leon Pierce, I live on Mayflower Drive in Londonderry, and I would just like to ask that, I have a flyer that explains the initial citizen, citizen's petition for the carbon fee dividend that's mentioned in that petition for the... for the carbon fee dividend that's mentioned in that petition for the climate. And I have a very good graphic that may be helpful for people to understand what that means, if that could be added to the YouTube that you've talked about before regarding the budget.
Sure, why don't, Kirby, why don't you see this nice lady and see what information she has, and we'll see how we can incorporate it into things and get it out for you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if we could include it in our minutes, so it would be posted on the, on the website?
Absolutely, I mean, sure. But we'll see what other things we can do to get the information out, and see what help we can be.
Wonderful.
Yeah, the only, we just have to be careful, and I'll talk to Attorney Ramstall, but any information we disseminate about any warrant articles, we have to be careful that we're not doing what's called electioneering. And so we'll just have to approve any, any materials that we put on in any of them.
Sure.
By Attorney Ramstall. Just is, is we help her understand how to do that on her own. Sure. Versus, so state law says we can't actually endorse it, because it's a citizen's petition. So we'll try to figure out how we can help you help get the information out.
Get it out there.
Right.
Okay.
Which I think we're allowed to do. I hope. Find out if I'm wrong.
Well, we'll try.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna try to move to, if there's any further questions, I'm gonna try to close the public hearing and move to the people who are to be appointed, so I can get them out of here. And thank you for staying and listening to how we're spending all the money here. Is there anything else for the, for the, for the, for the budget, anything?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Was it in favor somebody by saying aye?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Kirby, Mr. Terabassi of ZBAA?
I don't think, I don't think he's here.
He's not here.
Okay, so he's not here?
But he was recommended by the board to be reappointed.
He is a full-time or a part-time?
He's one year, he's gonna be one year full-time.
Okay, and I have Mr., I have Mr. Mahone here tonight.
Yes.
Okay, so let's, is there anyone else here that has to be appointed?
You just have Brian Batagli and Susan Brunel, but I don't think they're-
Neither one of them are here.
Correct, but they've been recommended to be reappointed.
Okay, so, um, so Mr. Mahone, you're interested in Solid Waste?
Yes.
So let's see if we can get these folks some, some time back at home.
What's the opening we have?
We, I have openings for Solid Waste, is that full?
Solid Waste, full-time, and John interviewed with you guys last time.
Right, I remember John.
So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Mahone to Solid Waste Committee?
Second.
Was it in favor somebody by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, Mr. Mahone, see, see the clerk. Thanks for staying and listening. I also have Mr. Terabassi for a one-year position on the ZBAA, and I have Mr. Batagli and Ms. Brunel. Ms. Brunel as an alternate for, is Batagli for the, for the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission? Or for the ZBAA?
For Southern New Hampshire, both alternates.
So Batagli and Brunel, Brian Batagli, Suzanne Brunel, as alternates for members of the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
So moved?
Second.
Was it in favor somebody by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. If anyone's here for appointments, please go see the clerk to be sworn in. I just wanted to get anyone out who wanted to be able to get out. New business, an order relative to the expenditure of maintenance trust for various projects, Mr. Cotton.
Okay, order number 2020-02, we have three items tonight. First item is for winter maintenance here at the Town Hall Library, Fire Department, Morrison Axis Center, for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7 events, for a total of $4,680.
Does Shady Hill have any salt left? I think they left it all on the front walkway.
Thought that walkway was supposed to be heated.
Yeah, I thought it was supposed to be heated. I'm talking the other one.
Oh, boy. Next item is at South Fire Station. We did have an overhead door closure burnout, so we went down and replaced all four overhead door units with a new remote controls for $1,163.84. And finally, for winter maintenance up at the senior center, for $200. For the total amount for this order tonight is $6,043.84.
Any questions? Accept the motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Was it in favor somebody by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Resolution 2020-01. 2020-01. A resolution of an elderly exemption policy, first reading. I'll accept the motion to waive reading.
So moved?
Was it in favor somebody by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, is there anything you want to add, Lisa, before I move on?
No, just to note that this is the 22.5% increase that the council asked us to bring to you. Included with your material is also a spreadsheet, which has different numbers for you to also look at, but they're not included in the resolutions, at 25% and at 20% increases.
Thank you. Resolution 2020-02, a resolution relative to the disabled person's consumption policy.
If I could, Mr. Chair, just wanted to mention that the reason why we've also done this one, modifying it by the same 22.5%, is because the two are tied together via our policies. Meaning you would, if you're on the disabled exemption, you would then move into the elderly exemption once you hit age 65.
And this is a first reading as well?
Correct.
Motion to waive first reading?
So moved?
Second.
Was it in favor somebody by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Next item for business is approval of minutes. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for January 6, 2020, as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Was it in favor somebody by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I have liaison reports, anything new from anybody on liaison reports? So the town manager and I have been out to five, 55 and older communities. I think we have three or four more to go. For folks that don't know, we spoke to between 50 and 75 people in each community, so for an amount of about 300 people per community. The overwhelming, you know, questions were all around revaluations, equalizations rates, a lot of questions around why private roads aren't paved by the town, a lot of questions, a lot of misunderstanding and misnomers about how the money is spent in town, and what it's spent on, and what dollars are distributed to whom, and just a litany of questions. Most of these meetings took about two hours. And I think they have a far greater understanding now why a lot of the decisions are made versus what's state law versus local law. And they have a much greater understanding of that the town, school, and library are three separate forms of government, and a much clearer understanding of who's responsible for which sections. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Town manager report, or any other liaisons?
Sure, yes, so I received a call recently from New Hampshire DOT on the matter of the Stonehenge and 28 project. The reason they were calling is because, first of all, it'll be going before the governor and council this week for approval. Once it's approved, they can start moving ahead with design. They contacted me, though, because we can go one of two directions as far as the design. We can either move to take it out of house from DOT to one of their contractors, which would increase the costs of the project by how much, I'm not sure, but it would also expedite how quickly this is done. Or if they do it in-house, which would be their preference, the cost would be less to do it, but right now there's about an eight-month backlog. And so we wouldn't be moving into the design phase until later this year. And it would be put out to bid for construction in early spring of 2023. So I'm looking to, uh-
Do you have a recommendation?
My recommend, yeah, my recommendation would be, although it moves a project out further, my biggest concern all along has been the costs associated with it. Seeing as we have a finite amount that we're putting toward the project, I would prefer to keep it in-house with DOT.
Anybody have any objection?
Would at least be worthwhile to find out what that other cost would be. Try and press them on that, I mean, if it's not that much more, it at least could have done in eight months faster.
I can ask.
And the only thing I like about it is, is that it holds DOT to, you know, to being completely and totally responsible and leaves us out of it.
Well, that is true.
We've already seen it, what a quarter-million-dollar cost growth.
Yeah. Yep.
And that way it's DOT's issue and-
Not us.
Not us.
Agreed. I just-
You can find out the number, but that's my, my point of view.
Oh, no, I agree, I just don't want to see this get delayed even further.
I'm with you.
Okay, anything further?
That's it.
Is there something else you want to ask this about? Yes, Freedom Electric?
Yes, so I am going to be actually meeting with them tomorrow to go over what the next phases are on how we get the ball moving forward.
Are you looking for consensus to sign?
Yes. Yeah.
So this is the electric aggregate?
Yeah, I read that over, looks good.
Oh, this is the aggregate.
Yeah, the, yeah, the-
Looks pretty straightforward.
The electric aggregate, there's an agreement we have to sign that allows them to go out and start doing solicitation for bids. It's been reviewed by Attorney Ramstall, and he's satisfied with the agreement.
So we'll be able to buy collectively as a town?
That'll be great. Hopefully save quite a bit of money, I would think.
I hope so.
Be interesting to know how much actual electricity we use as a town.
Maybe, maybe we could have a couple of examples from them.
Once you meet with them, maybe they can come back and-
Sure.
Okay. Lisa, anything?
Just a couple of quick things, move quickly. First, I wanted to report that we had a great organizational meeting for Old Home Day. We had a good turnout, so if anyone is interested still in volunteering, you are welcome to do so. We'd love to have you just get in touch with Kirby here at Town Hall. Second thing, at the council's request, I just wanted to put it out there, and I'll be getting in specific contact with our boards and committees, but we are scheduling another refresher right-to-know training, 91A, for our boards and commissions, which will be done by an attorney from NHMA. It will be in June, early June. So like I said, I'll reach out to board chairs both prior to and after our March elections, so everybody knows and has plenty of time to prepare. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, just for the council's benefit, as well as the residents, in our continuing efforts to monitor the PFAS situation, I recently attended, and I'm going to continue to attend, meetings of the legislatively-created, quote, "Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of PFAS." Other towns have specific seats on this commission, like Bedford, Merrimack, Hudson, Litchfield. We do not have a seat on the commission, but of course the meetings are public. So I will attend those, just to monitor what's going on. They're supposed to study the, like I said, the environmental and public health impacts and make recommendations with regard to any legislation that they would foresee being possible and or necessary. There's also other legislation related to the PFAS matter that are, that is in the legislature right now that I'll be monitoring as well, including a few bills which would aim to create a funding mechanism for PFAS-related mitigation efforts, so I'll keep you apprised.
Yeah, for the folks that don't know, St. Albans has joined the lawsuit with the other two entities here in the state. And the, of course, the judge has determined that DES may have moved a little faster. There is information on their website with regards to well-testing here in town.
If I could, Mr. Chair, one more item of interest in that regard. There is actually an amendment to, I believe it's a Senate bill right now, which would codify the standards that DES adopted, thereby effectively ending the lawsuit, so we'll see if that goes anywhere.
See where that goes.
Yeah.
It's all very confusing and very complicated.
It is.
Anything else? I heard the Celtics are up by 12 at the half against the Lakers.
I do have one question for Kevin. Has there been any news or movement on the solar project on our abandoned land off Auburn Road?
Not that I'm aware of. Last time we checked in with them, which was a couple of months ago, they're still trying to solicit people to buy the power. But at this point, I don't have any new updates on it.
Why don't you have them talk to Freedom?
Who?
The aggregator.
Oh, Freedom, sorry, I thought you said Frida.
You can talk to him, too. I don't know what he's gonna do for you, but you know. Why don't you see if you can connect them?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I didn't know part of our contract was that they were trying to actually get people to buy the power, and then they would actually build.
No, I mean, they explained that from the outset, that they had to get buyers for it. So.
So let's find out. Is there anything further tonight from anyone? Accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Was it in favor somebody by saying aye?
Aye.